We will now begin the regular meeting of Board of Education for Monday, July 11, 2016. Do we have a roll call, Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Simmons.
Present.
Odom, here. Carroll, here. Marks.
Present.
Forrest, here. Perez.
Here in the quorum is present. First on the agenda, we have audience comments, and at this time, we have none. So we move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Duster?
Thank you. First thing, since we're starting out a new year, I put in front of you information we discussed about our agreements that we had approved. And what I want to do is, I made copies for each board member. I'll put it out on our board on the table before each of our board meetings, so that we can look through of our agreements that we discussed. So I can start now our next meeting. I'll just information out in front of you. And then, the second one, board training for Senate Bill 100. Part of the Senate Bill 100 law is that we have to train the Board of Education. And I don't need an answer now, but if there's any available dates in August that would be convenient, have half an hour, maybe forty-five minute training on that. Just go over kind of the foundation of what we're just on.
If you could touch that for me in 2016?
Um...
It's only happened now.
If we could do it before?
Before, before. No, I'm gonna let Forrest. It doesn't matter, just like I said, I recommend.
Yeah. Okay, it's a good suggestion. Alright, so if you would email me some available dates that would work for you, let me know, and then we can go ahead and do that, okay? Alright, and then I'll look at that as well. If we could before it's up, or better, come a little bit earlier, that might be better.
And when are you back on for vacation?
Twenty-fifth. Yep.
Okay, with that, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are three items, I believe. There is minutes of special board meeting medication meeting, June 6th, 2016, regular Board of Education meeting, June 13th, 2016, executive session meeting, June 13th, 2016, committee of whole meeting, June 27th, 2016, executive session, June 27th, 2016, special Board of Education meeting, June 27th, 2016, and special Board of Education meeting, June 30th, 2016. There is also gifts, Western Avenue Brownies and Daisy's, buddy bench for Western Avenue School Playground, $537.97. Dr. Duster, did you even talk about this?
Sure. We done this at Flossom Hills too, but there's been a donation of a buddy bench, and it's for kids to sit at, and if they don't have someone to play with, they sit down at that bench, and kids come up to them, and they go ahead and they start playing. It's been a huge success at Flossom Hills, and the hope that Western Avenue is able to do the same. It's a nice addition.
So, can we just say we donated, or did we?
Yeah, it was the Brownies and Daisy's.
Oh, right.
Yeah. The Brownies.
Brownies.
Yep.
And then, of course, item D is a court request. Hold on a second. So, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented. This is Marks, seconded by Mrs. Harold. I have a question regarding one of these, in terms of the minutes for the future 13th, 2016 meeting. Specifically, actually, I think...
13th, June?
I'm sorry, this is June 13th, 2016, page 7. It says, roll call bottom, it says eyes, Odom, Hocky, Odom, Forrest, Perez, and Nays, Carroll, Marks, and Simmons, and it says the motion failed. Any eyes of the Nays need to be flipped? So, let me revise my motion. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda items as presented, with the suggested edit from the June 13th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Mrs. Harold?
Yes, sir.
Second, Mrs. Horvath. Do we have a roll call, Mrs. Prino?
Oh, we're doing a whole nother thing, we're not asking if it's okay.
Well, unless anyone else is making a motion.
Yes, Carroll and Forrest, okay. Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have information action item, approval of bills.
I have a bill this month, which I put for me, and we can live on our behalf, I will be responsible for it.
And I have found the bills to be in good order. A total amount of $964,774.39. I will entertain a motion to accept the bills as presented. Mrs. Horvath? And just, roll call, Mrs. Prino?
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of payroll. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll at the amount of $3,328,456.46 for the month of June. Mrs. Harold?
My side.
Second, Mrs. Horvath. Do we have a roll call, Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda is the approval of personnel report. I will call for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
What motion?
Mrs. Harold? Second, Mrs. Odom. Do we have a roll, is there any discussion, questions? Do we roll call Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of school handbooks. I'll call for a motion to approve the elementary and junior high school handbooks as presented. Mrs. Harold?
My side.
Seconded by Mrs. Horvath. Are there any comments, questions? Do we roll call Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of Flossom Hills wheelchair lift replacement. I will call for a motion to approve the Garaventa lift to replace the itching handicap lift in the gym at Flossom Hills at the cost of $18,421. Mrs. Harold is first.
Second.
Mrs. Odom is second. Do we roll call Mrs. Prino?
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have a report out from Mrs. Tynan-Jenelle Boyd Odom on the NSDA conference for the springtime. Mrs. Odom?
I'm trying to sign in, and I'm unable to pull up the, I need an hour and a half.
Okay. There's a lot of persons.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a specific one you want?
No.
Start from here.
I have one. This is Dr. Christopher Enden, EMDIM. He spoke first, and they, this guy is so absolutely amazingly dynamic, like total high level thinking. I've told the Illinois Association of School Boards that they need to get him here for the November meeting. His main focus is STEM, of course, promoting STEM in all the schools, and not just a science program, but a full STEM program. He was so popular that they had him there on the pre-day for all of the pre-conference activities, and all of these people showed up from the pre-day again for the regular session, the smaller session, but they had to move us to this banquet room, because it was so humongous, it was so many people, that it was, the room was like, totally not enough. So he filled up this whole banquet room, because he's such a dynamic speaker. His focus is teaching the children where they are today, and to stop teaching education like we've been teaching it since Brown versus Board of Education, that we need to focus on where they're at. So he showed, he's hooked up with one of the rappers from Wu-Tang group?
Wu-Tang Clan.
Wu-Tang Clan, right. And they're doing a STEM where the students are rapping, they make raps of the physics problems, and they have to, the physics problem has to be correct. First, they work on the physics problem, and then they work on the rap, and then they have to present it. And they're doing these camps all over the United States in different schools. He also talked about the fact that we have to teach to the kids based on their language, like instead of spending so much class time telling them, you know, to use this proper language or that proper language, we need to catch up with them, because we're wasting educational time in not learning the way that they learn, not talking the way that they talk, and expecting them to learn a prehistoric, as he called it, a prehistoric way of speaking and talking, and how society navigates these days. I think a lot of the stuff that he said, we already do, we have 21st century learning in our school district. A lot of schools, of course, do not, they don't have one-on-one education, they don't have the technology or the budgets to do that. And so he had a lot to say about that. There was a couple of people from Ohio, and I think Washington DC, who felt like, you know, they shouldn't dumb themselves down, and they aren't, if you speak to the kids the way that they speak today, aren't you doing them a disservice? And he's like, how's that working for you? How's your scores in your school district? And both of them sat that down, because of course, they had challenges in their school district with their scores, and he says, you know, and Saturday is doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting a different result. We have to stop. So anyway, he was very good, I really appreciated his thought of the fact that the teachers have to teach the students the way that they learn, and not waste educational time.
Do you think it all about STEAM concept about, I think, I think it's certain that ours got taken out of the conversation. Did he speak it all about that, or is it just what he said he's there?
Well, he only, he didn't speak about STEAM, he only spoke on STEM, and promoting that. He says, most people don't even know what STEAM is yet, I mean, what STEM is yet. They haven't even implemented STEM, and now we're trying to add another alphabet. So he's trying to promote, you know, the higher level thing, just in STEAM, and go from there. This one is, this particular session was the stakeholders invested in our children, and I would, this is something that I want us to look into as a district, and it's of interest of everyone else. But they spoke about the fact that most of the children are not going, are not qualified for early education in our district, in school districts, and a lot of the kids' parents aren't enrolling them in our early education program, because it's a half a day, and they can't make arrangements. So they put them into community preschool programs, and that we're losing out by not linking those children to our district, because the children coming into kindergarten or in our preschool programs already know how we think, how we teach, what's expected of them, and we're losing this whole thing. And they, he showed statistics of the children who participated in the preschool program within their school district, and those who came in to kindergarten for the first time into the district, and what the scores were by the time they got to third grade. They track those same children, and the third grade, when they finally take the standardized test, those third grade scores are just like this, because the children are losing out. So for purposes of our community relationship, they thought you could put both of them, yeah, we can reach out to the community, and to those parents who are not within the district at an early age, by having the preschools, all the preschools that feed into our district, the children go there, like for us, it would be like Flossom Community Church, or this preschool up here on Kids, I can't think of the name of it, Children's World, or whatever. What's it called?
Studdings Falls.
Yeah, Studdings Falls, or something like that, whatever it is. Have those teachers first participate in all of our teacher in-service programs. So invite them to come, the preschool teachers, kindergarten teachers, in those preschool programs, to come into our district, it's no charge, no additional fee for us, to have additional teachers here. They're getting the same training that our teachers are training, and hopefully, they're taking that back to those students. Also, to have those preschool students attend some of the classes or functions at our school, so that they're, they feel more comfortable when they come in. They're not like the new kid, because all these other kids who've been in early preschool program are already friends, they're already, you know, looked, linked up, and how important it is at age five and six for children to make a bond and have a connection. So I thought that was very important, and I really like the community-to-school connection, because these teachers, most of the teachers who teach at those preschools are not members of our community, and they have no idea how our, the culture of our community, what our expectations are, and their curriculum may not be aligned. They did talk about curriculum alignment as well, that we could possibly mentor those different preschools, so that their curriculum is aligned with ours, and the kids are coming in already, and hopefully, they don't have the opposite data to show that the children who do come in and have this community relationship with us, they don't, they haven't collected enough data to show that their scores at age, at grade three are even, but it's a start to try to answer the question of what that gap is, why is that gap there?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I wanted to say that I think that you touched on an essential point that I think is lost sometimes, and I think that is also addressed by your first speaker, you saw Mr. Evans, that it's the goal, of course, to make sure that you're all speaking the same language, that your expectations are aligned, and that when that doesn't happen, you know, you may feel that, okay, well, these are our expectations, these, there are expectations, people should read your mind and understand, you know, what we expect. But the reality is that it just doesn't happen, and the research that I have seen that speaks to this supports exactly what you said, that it is absolutely essential to make sure that we are aligned vertically, horizontally, diagonally, and that we can, we're having the same expectations coming in and coming out. So I think that's really nice of him. Just want to be clear.
Right. Come on, you need it. That one, I'm gonna see. That's in there?
It says, invited to early childhood education, that's the first step, you guys were mentioned. Yeah. We already pretty much said that.
Okay.
And they, their thing was that we need to start STEM in early childhood as well. Christopher talked about it in a way, Dr. Enden, I'm sorry, he talked about it in the sense of junior high and high school. This woman gave us a perspective of how to link STEM with, and early childhood, that we need to start, if we expect them to come into the 21st century or into the next century at a higher level, and don't expect that gap between preschool, I mean, junior high and high school, then we have to break it in. And they show different examples, you can look on the website, just having community members, within your own community, it can be free. We have engineers, we have scientists, we have robotics. I mean, I know Mr. Keys, Bernard Keys, he has a technology robot building thing, we can have those parents come in and promote these types of things, it doesn't have to be something that's big, and, you know, all written up, or whatever, we just tap into our own community, and that again, connects the community and the school district and school learning.
Right, so I was gonna say, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
This one was, oh, the disproportionate, I think we talked about this at the previous meeting, about disproportionate consequences that are put on children in the school district based on race and gender. And basically, their, the biggest thing, they created this pamphlet, said their promotion or their suggestion was to create a pamphlet that's separate from handbook, separate from any handbook, it's just a discipline pamphlet that says, these are the types of conduct that fit into this, so you can do it in a pie, and the top of the pie would be the most egregious act, and give them examples, set out examples of how your child can get this discipline consequence, and then go all the way down, and it has color codes on the side, and something really simple that a parent can rely on. They also suggested, and I think we've done this already, a discipline conference with the parents every single year, where they come in, the only thing on the agenda is talking about expectations with regards to discipline. And this is all just to bring down the amount of discipline incidents. It's not a cure to the emotional and behavioral problems of children, of course, it's just so that we can keep down the incidence of it. And then, of course, like I said earlier, in the previous time, it's important for us to keep data, because the Attorney General's office now, because of the bill, they're watching, and this is something that is on their high beam, and they're paying attention, keep the data of what the race and gender is, and the discipline that's given, being given out, because when you're up in front of the Attorney General's office for investigation, you have, you need to have, it's sort of like being called into IRS for audit. You know, how nervous you get, and worried you get, and, oh my God, this is just as serious, or more serious, I think, when we're talking about our children. So that was the biggest thing I got from there. Create a separate handbook, make sure that you have meetings every year, at the beginning of the year, so that parents know and students know what the expectations are, and they understand whatever their discipline have is, and what the consequences are for each act. And that was pretty much it. I will keep the data. Oh, the, this one, you guys have to look, I think I sent you the link for all of their PowerPoint as well. That's way too much for me to talk about, it was excellent, we stayed like way over, I missed the next session I was supposed to go to, because we were still answering questions. They have an excellent community-parent relationship, and the, along with the businesses, bringing in businesses in the community, and so that's something that you guys can go through and read. I took, the most important thing I took away from there, I think I was telling Dr. Duster and Steve, that they have the parent universities at the PTO meeting every month. So the same parents who are active, who are present, who give the information out to the masses, because they try the same thing we try, have it off-site in the evening, they even have it on Saturdays, and still, they show pictures of the amount of people who came, mostly it was board members, sitting there on Saturday, with maybe one parent. So they decided to put the parent universities within the agenda of the PTO, so they work back forth collaboratively on getting the information out, getting the parents trained. I think, oh, leadership matters. We already gone over this, Craig, you gave us the calls of conduct, expectations of a board member. The biggest thing I took away from this is that we have to be congenial to one another, collaborative, and have each other's back, have the superintendent and the board members, it's a team effort, and it's not just you and us, you against us, we watch it, you watching us, it is collaborative and friendly. Oh, and the seven steps, that's something that I sent to everybody as well, I'm gonna go through that again, but it was very informative. I think that's the last one. And we had also, I had an opportunity here, Dan Rather speak, Rod and Robert speak, and I cannot remember the name of the third guy, but he was really boring, so that's why. But they, you know, it's, it was one of their speeches, or things that, you know, are general. Now, tell them their story, their individual story of success, and then some of my books afterwards. Wasn't much to report on that.
Well, it sounds like you had a fantastic conference with lots of really great ideas, and certainly relevant to what we're trying to do here, and I just want to say, thank you for taking the time off of work to go on this conference for the district, and the, I think that really, the overall message I get here is communication, and making sure that we are speaking to the public, we're engaging the public, and even with the pamphlet related to Senate Bill, and also school discipline, which, you know, has some interesting conversations. I think that the underlying message there is that you're all in the same application of conduct, and also of vision of where we want to get this district. So again, thank you for that.
One more thing, I forgot, the, one of those sessions, I can't remember which one, suggested that for our agendas, so that the community can see how we're progressing in our strategic plan, that we label the agenda, the head of that agenda item is whatever the strategic plan we're addressing, and that way, it shows them that we're working on each one of those things in the strategic plan, and basically, as we create a report right where they're seated after we finish.
Comments, questions?
Which one was it?
This is the National School Board Association.
Will you even get to any of the sessions that I did, and how you about?
All, actually, all of the ones that I did. Mostly everyone that you have emailed me, because I just didn't have any other comments. Well, Stephen sent me some, and so what I did is I went through the ones that I had, you had, and he had, that were actually the ones. Because of so many.
I'm saying, I'm not there, I'm sorry. You're looking at it, it's 10 minutes.
You missed it?
I missed it. Did you look at the alternative to special education models, or started an act of sort of thing, but I don't see any questions from you?
No, I didn't even, I wasn't interested in that.
So you just want to find some more?
That all was, yeah, the three, like I said, that's the three suggestions, my suggestions, your suggestions, his suggestions, and whichever ones were coincident, the same.
I'm just saying, I don't see any of the ones I sent you, I don't think any of those were.
Was next time you get to go?
No, I don't think it's one file, I think it's too much money. For what you get out of it. I don't think we do anything for suggestions, what happens. So should it next year, it change, you can use?
It's all the number?
No, I didn't know it could really reach, my notes.
Okay, well?
No, for us, we have some more.
Well, if there are no more, if there are no more comments and questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Again, thank you. Luckily, you did have to take off work for this. Next on the agenda is our executive session. We will enter into executive session from
We will enter into executive session for matters related to closed meeting minute reviews, review of executive session minutes, eighteen months or less, and executive minutes recommended from these, and review of executive minutes recommended to be kept confidential. We'll also be discussing matters of personnel, and... I imagine this should take about twenty minutes. If you're here, go to see them again, if you're not, you're in a fantastic July, you'll see what our next one is. We'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Oh.
This is Odom's first, and it's Harold's second.
Okay, so...
Can we roll call some down?
Okay, go on, you got it. Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Parry.
Has the motion as presented?